I'm going to bring the Board of Supervisors back to order. And we're going to continue with Item 19A, which is for possible action and discussion. Filling of an appointment for one member of the Library Board of Trustees that will expire in June 2020 because it's filling a vacant. See, that occurred. So I believe we have Mr. Zimmerman. Hello.
Hi, how are you all?
Wonderful. Thank you so much for coming.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I will say that my voice is not as what it usually is because I had a cervical disectomy and a fusion more than two weeks ago, so I'm still hoarse.
Thank you so much for coming and expressing interest in this position.
You're welcome.
So our process is we'll just go around and have each of us ask you a question, and then we can just have a dialogue about the position. So I'll start with, why don't you tell us why you want the job and what specific knowledge, skills, or abilities you think you bring to the position?
Thank you. I have, since I've lived in Carson City for 25 years, I've been using the library consistently. I fit the demographic of the senior now that is the most common user of the library in checking out books. And so I'm a fan of the library. And when I saw that they had the master planning process, I participated in that earlier this year and got to learn a lot more about the library and the functions and the staff and so forth and so on. And so recently retired, I thought as a volunteer it would be a good fit for me. I did work as in the undergraduate library at the university I went to for three and a half years. So I know a lot about the library functions and, you know, kind of a routine basis. And what was the second part of the question?
And what specific knowledge, skills, and abilities you think you can bring to the position?
Well, I've, aside from having an interest in the library, I also volunteered to be, provide a technical support outside the board. So I have an application in for that. And I've talked to one of the staff members about that, but haven't heard anything back yet on that. So my skill set is I basically have been a manager of people for the last 20-plus years, supervising technical people doing technical work in consulting. And so I have a broad understanding of how teams work. And I assume the Board of Trustees works as a team. And I've led teams, I've been a member of teams. And, excuse me, having, you know, understood what the goals and objectives of the library are through the master planning process for the next five years, I feel I can help out a lot in support of those, achieving those goals and objectives.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Barrett, you have a question?
I do. I, thank you. I, I'm a big reader myself, and I, so I ask people sometimes to name recent fiction and a recent nonfiction, or your favorite fiction and nonfiction book that you've...
Well, sure. In terms of the fiction side, I'm a fan of the certain authors that are mostly detective and/or, yeah, legal and detective books. So that takes care of that. On the technical side, I read books about, I'm a geologist, so I read, still read books about the earth, and I keep up with the latest in earth sciences and, and related, you know, ecological and environmental issues.
Thank you.
Mr. Giomi, do you have a question?
Certainly. Thank you for applying. It sounds like you have reviewed the strategic plan, so that's kind of the first part of my question. Obviously, if you were part of it, you must have read it.
Yeah, I spent a lot of time wordsmithing it with the rest of the group.
So how will you go about ensuring the library staff and the board works toward accomplishment of those goals in the strategic plan?
Well, it's my understanding from the, looking at the job application online initially that one of the, or one of the primary objectives of being a trustee is to help the new, well, in this case, we have a new director, achieve his objectives. So I, and I assume those are aligned with the strategic plan closely at this point, but I don't know for sure. But as a board member, it is my understanding that we would help the director achieve those goals that have been set out and that are mutually agreed upon, that are set out in the plan that are, appear to be achievable given the budget. This is not a budgetary plan, so it's a, it's a plan that has some lofty goals and certainly, certainly achievable, but I don't know how the strategic planning and the business planning have linked up for at least the next year or the next five years. And that would be something that I assume we would support, you know, the progress of, in achieving those goals.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bonkowski?
Hey, Charles.
Hi.
My question for you is, give me your personal thoughts on digital content versus hard copy materials? The pros and cons of each? How you would prioritize funding for each? And which you think is the most important?
Well, my personal preference is to hold a hard copy book in my hand. I do have a couple of Kindles, and I use them for certain, for trips and such, but I, I like holding a hard copy book in my hand. So that's my personal preference. In terms of what the patrons of the library might want, I believe that I, when I'm in there, I happen to see more people checking out books than checking out digital material. Of course, if you have a, my wife, for example, she only reads on a Kindle, so you do that from your home computer and you can access all the books. So I don't know what the, from the surveying that was done in support of the plan, I don't know what the percentage is, but I think there's probably equally, they're of equal importance to our, or the patrons of the library that would want to have access to both and, and quick access. I mean, I think that's one of the benefits that we have in this library is that most everything is available within a few weeks if you're on a hold list. So I believe that it's, they're of equal importance, and I wouldn't have any predisposition towards one or the other, if that's what the intent of your question was.
And does that include funding?
Oh, funding? Well, you know, given the space limitations we have with this library, and, you know, there are books that are no longer on the shelf, and they're in a repository somewhere in the system somewhere else. And so, you know, you have to wait for those to come in. But I assume that funding of electronic materials is, or electronic materials are less expensive than hard copy materials. And so maybe there's a benefit to obtaining many more e-books, so to speak, than hard copy books. And that, if that's what the strategy is, I can understand that. And I don't know, you know, I don't know much about funding for the library in terms of how it gets resourced. I assume most of it comes from you all in the city. And then making the decision where to put it is a, is a joint effort in, in response to, I guess, continually surveying what the patrons want. Sure.
Thank you. Do you have anything further you'd like to talk with us about?
Well, you know, I look forward to hearing a positive result from my visit here, but I understand you've probably got five good candidates, you know, sitting waiting to hear. So I hope I can help the library, and that's really why I'm here.
Thank you so very much for your time in a speedy recovery.
No, it's getting better.
Getting there? Okay. Thank you again so much for applying. And you're welcome to stay if you'd like, since you've already done your testimony, but you don't have to.
Um, I don't, I think you've probably got good candidates, all of us, yeah. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. How are you? Are you, Nina Satley?
Yes.
Great. If you can press the button and then let go so it stays green around the rim. And listen, oh, he'd already left it on. Sorry. And then state your name for the record and sign in.
Nina Satley.
Okay. Thank you so much for applying for the position today. We really appreciate your time. The process is we'll each ask you a question or so, and then give you another opportunity to, to make a statement, and then we'll go on to the next set of interviewees, and at the end, we'll select the candidate.
Okay. Thank you.
So my question is, why do you want the position? And what knowledge, skills, and abilities do you bring to the position?
Well, I retired as a teacher last year, the end of the school year last year. So I'm looking for a way to be involved on a continuing basis with kids and adults. My elderly mother lives with me, and we probably get 20 library books every other week because she doesn't get out much. And to me, it's just so, so important that the library is available to everybody. You know, it doesn't matter how old you are, or what your economic status is, or gender, anything. It's just there and able to use. And I love being a part of something that's inclusive for everybody. Being a teacher, I have experience working with, elementary mostly, with teaching. Fourth grade was where I spent my time. But that does include lots of the language arts and reading and all of those kinds of things. I've also been a teacher of adults. I'm a stained glass artist as well. And that is something, the creativity and the things that go along with that, I think, are, are important in any job, problem-solving kinds of skills.
Thank you so much. Mr. Barrett?
Yes. Could you name for me one fiction book and one nonfiction book you've read either recently or that's a favorite of yours from all your reading?
Okay. Oh, gosh, I read so much.
That's, that's why it's a hard question.
It is a hard question. Borg, what's his first name?
Todd.
Yeah. He wrote the Tahoe series. And I love mysteries. And when I had a friend come into town, I have only lived here about six years, so there's a lot of things in this area that I haven't done yet. And a friend came in, she had four free nights up at a place at Tahoe, so we went up there and spent four days and did all the touristy things. And then I discovered the Tahoe books, and it was like, I know exactly what he's talking about! And it was just so exciting to read those.
So do you hang out at the Red Hut, too?
No. But we did go there for ice cream. Nonfiction, I've been real interested lately in F. Scott Fitzgerald. And I've really been reading about him and his wife Zelda. I can't tell you the name of the books. I've read several of them, and I've actually started reading some of his writings, too, just because I'm curious. And I realized that I'm a little lacking in the historical kinds of novels. So I've started going back and reading some of the ones that either I read when I was in my teens and have forgotten, or just have heard about and am interested in reading.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Mr. Giomi?
Good afternoon, Nina. Thanks for applying.
You're welcome.
Are you aware that the library has a strategic plan, and have you reviewed that?
I was not aware of that, no.
Okay. They do have a strategic plan.
Good.
Developed it with the assistance of UNR and a lot of input from the community. If you're on the Board of Trustees, how will you go about ensuring or monitoring the progress of achieving the goals in the strategic plan by the Board of Trustees and the library staff?
Well, I would assume there are regular meetings for the Board of Directors. Keeping that strategic plan in front of us as we do meetings, I think, would be very important. And looking ahead to what's coming next year or next month, or planning something that could be going on in the following amount of time. I think if you come to do meetings and talk about issues that are problems, which is fine, you know, you have to address those things, but to always have that plan in front of you, I think is really important.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bonkowski?
Hey, Nina.
Hi.
My question for you, I'd like to know your personal thoughts on digital content versus hard copy materials? The pros and cons? How you would prioritize funding? And which to you is the most important?
Wow. Okay. Well, I think they're both important.
That's why I'm the mean one. Hard question.
Well, for me personally, I like the pages of a book. I do have the digital, digital readers, and I've taken that with me, like on trips and stuff, to read on the plane. But it's just not the same as sticking four or five hard, or soft cover books in my bag, my carry-on bag. I think the digital is important because the newer generations are growing up with that, and it's more comfortable to them. But at the same time, I don't want them to lose the paper. You know, maybe eventually we would get to that point, but I hope it doesn't go away completely. Digital is this whole new generation, and I've got kids that are in their 30s, so they've grown up with it, and that's what they know. You know, I was talking one day to a son, and we were talking about the word coyote. And we were discussing, is it coyote or coyotee? And so I reached down into the drawer of the desk and pulled out a dictionary. He says, Mom, are you painting books, really? And of course, he found it faster than I did because he was using his, his phone. But that's what they know. So if we can get them to read with digital when maybe they wouldn't be willing to pick up a book, I'm all for it. As far as funding goes, I'm guessing, I don't really know, but I would guess that the digital would take more money. But I think it's just as important to have money available for books as they come out, new books being written, maybe old books that should be brought back. You know, sometimes we forget the ones that have been around for a long time. And when I look at the ones on the shelf at the library, you can tell which ones have been there for a long time and which ones haven't. And I think both are important. So funding, I would have a hard time saying at this point without more information, but I think it's, it's worth supporting both.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And again, I want to thank you so much for coming. Do you have any final comments or thoughts you'd like to share with us?
Well, we've gone over pretty much everything. I've got quite a varied background. I was married to a military man, so I've lived in probably five or six different countries. So that kind of information and experience contributes to who I am and how I see things. I enjoy working in groups. I enjoy problem solving. I am a member of session at my church, an elder at my church. So I'm used to that kind of full group where you debate things and, and you have to come up with a, something that works for most of the people involved. So I think I can contribute to that very well.
Thank you again so very much for applying. So we'll continue with the interviews with the other candidates, and then we'll make a decision in the end. So you're welcome to stay if you'd like.
Okay.
But you don't have to.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much, all of you.
Thanks. Both of them? That's okay.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Hi, welcome.
Hello.
Hello. So if you can state your name for the record, if you want to. Beth Lucas. Oh, so we don't have Serena or Joseph. Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. Lucas. Thank you so much for coming today and applying for this position. We really appreciate it. The process is we're just going to each of us ask you a question or so, and then give you a chance to have a final closing remark. And then we'll interview the remaining candidates and make a choice today.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you again so much. So my question is, why do you want the position? And what knowledge, skills, and abilities do you bring to the position?
I have actually, for several years now, thought that serving on the board for the library would be the way that I would like to give back to Carson City. I'm a certified public accountant, newly licensed, and one of the foundations of our profession is that we give back to the community. That's kind of where I wanted to go. But I haven't been able to in the past when I've seen positions come open. I've been in school, I've been studying for my licensing exams, I work full-time, I have children. I'm done with school, and I'm done with licensing. And so I feel like this is the right time for me to be able to take this on. I'm new as far as being a board member in a volunteer capacity. I have not really done that before, so I don't bring any experience that way. But I am an accountant. I've been in the field for seven years. And so I think accountants are really good at critical thinking and problem solving, really good at like, kind of fact-checking, not gut-checking things, thinking, does this make sense? We really love puzzles, a lot of us, making things neat and tidy, wrapping things up. So I guess that's always been kind of my skill set. The library, because I just love the library. I've been coming to the Carson City Library since I was a small girl, all the way through. My kid, I bring my kids. It's just dear to my heart. I read a lot, a lot, and I could never have afforded to purchase all the books that I go through. And even today, I would rather read a paper book than a Kindle book, although I think it's great that you can get Kindle books at the library, and I think that that's important, too. I just think that there's very few places that you can go to that have this huge wealth of information and interesting things. You can rent movies, you can use the computers, there's all sorts of clubs and programs, and it's free. And it's free to everybody. It's, there's not very many ways that you can, you're not going to, what, you're going to go shopping? You want to leave the house, you interact, you want to get out and do something. For me, my fallback has always been the library. So I think I've always ultimately wanted to get involved. And I think now is my time.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett, do you have a question?
Thank you. Yes. Speaks well of you that you didn't say that you're through with your children. It seems like we never get through with that situation. Could you name for me fiction and a nonfiction book you've either read recently or that you looms large in your mind from long ago when you read it? Each of them, fiction, nonfiction?
Fiction and nonfiction. You know, one that stands out to me in nonfiction is probably the Freakonomics book, because I thought that was such an interesting way to approach economics and behavioral economics. And that started, I didn't even realize there were books like that. And so that started me into like, a whole series of behavioral economics books, and why people make decisions, and how people make decisions, and greater societal trends, and how things are impacted and carry through. And so that, I love that book. I still have it on my shelf. And trying to think of what I've read recently that was nonfiction, or fiction that stands out in my head. I tend to rip through them, and then I kind of brain dump.
That's fiction.
Especially since I'm not reading accounting texts all the time anymore. I've been reading a lot of nonfiction for a lot of years. I really liked the Minnabata Bar series, that one comes to mind. She's the park ranger, written by a former park ranger. And I always liked that you could learn a little bit about all of our national parks while you were reading them, and get a perspective of, a bit what that career was like, although kind of dramatic overall, you know? I don't think that there are dead bodies in all our national parks on an ongoing basis. But I have read those, I think, a couple times, starting probably high school, going, going through. She's stuck with me.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Giomi?
Beth, thank you for applying. Are you aware that the library has a strategic plan?
I am. I looked at the one earlier today that expires in 2019.
Okay.
Just trying to see...
I don't think they've actually circulated there widely, but...
The new.
But they, but they will. Anyway, it's on the website. But, but, so you are aware. So as far as that strategic plan goes, as a member of the Board of Trustees, what will you do to ensure that you, as a board member, and the rest of the board, and the library staff sort of monitor and follow that strategic plan? What will your approach be to doing that?
I think that that's one of those systematic things. So I know we have, I know that there are monthly board meetings. I would imagine that a lot of your agenda is going to be checking up on the status of those items. I imagine, like I said, I have not done this before, but I imagine that you get updates from the library staff. Sorry, I get nervous. So I imagine that it's a lot of going back to that. I mean, that's how we handle big projects at work. You go back to your original agenda, you go back to your original plan. How are we doing on this? How do we modify this? Can we make this work? Or is this not going to work? Do we need to take a different path with this, with this item, with this objective? How does that lead to these other objectives? I think it's a constant checking in. I mean, that's generally, I believe, how things are approached in business. It's constantly re-monitoring, and are we on track? Are we on schedule? How do we change this? That's how we handle things at work, so.
Okay.
But I do expect to learn a lot from the other existing board members.
Okay. Mr. Bonkowski?
Hi, Beth. No need to be nervous. You're almost done.
Accountant, yeah. I don't count out much.
Only one question left. My question for you, I'd like to know your personal thoughts on digital content versus hard copy materials? The pros and cons of each, in your opinion? How you would prioritize funding? And the last part of my question was, which is the most important to you, but you already answered?
I do love paper books, but I also understand that going forward, then, that may not be the future. I think they're always going to have a place. I can see that my kids are very plugged in and very technologically aware. I can see it at work, that we, you know, our whole system is kept in the cloud, and we're always trying to be at the forefront of using new technology. I think that that is just the reality. So I think it's amazing that you can get audiobooks and Kindle books and everything through the library. I'm... It doesn't feel the same to lay in bed reading a Kindle, I don't think. So I think that all the mediums really do have their place, but I think that going forward, we're going to see more and more digital formats. I think that's just the way it is. And so we need to work with it and we need to stay at the forefront, or we're not going to capture the public. They're not going to see us as valuable.
How are you?
Thank you very much.
Great. If you can press the button, either seat is fine, and then just press the button and Thank you again, Beth, for applying. And is there any final comments or anything you'd like to say? then release it so that the green around the bottom.
No, I think I'm good.
And would you state your name?
I would really like the opportunity.
Yes, my name's Mary Bianca Blome, B-L-O-H-M-E.
I know I'm probably a little green, but I feel like I have a lot of years ahead of
Great, I guess, okay.
me and I've got that time in my life now and that desire to finally be able to do
So the process today that we're going to do is each of us, I'll ask you a question or so, and then we'll give you an opportunity for a closing comment, and then we'll continue
some service for the community. So I'd love the opportunity.
Okay, good. Thank you, and you're welcome to stay and listen to the others since you've already on with the interviews of the other candidates and then make a selection. completed your interview.
Okay.
Okay. At the conclusion of the final one, we'll make a decision here and select someone. So first, I want to start off with, thank you so much for applying for the position. It's so vitally important to have the public come forward and wish to volunteer for these So again, you're welcome to stay, but it's not required.
Okay.
And you can stay in this room even if you want. It's your choice. positions.
Thank you.
So my question is, why do you want the position and what knowledge, skills, and abilities Thank you again. do you bring to the table?
I currently support the library system by volunteering with Nevada Talking Books. I work for that about three hours a week. And I also volunteer for national talking books in a different function, both, each of those doing a different process. I feel the library is very important in the community. As a child growing up, I didn't have a lot of resources. My parents didn't, but I always had the library that was free, safe, clean, and gave me a place to expand my mind and open and learn. So I very strongly believe it should be open and available to all the citizens, and that's why I donate my time.
Thank you. Could you please for me name a recent or one that stands out in your mind, a book that you've read in fiction and then also in nonfiction? Either recent or go back.
Well, they're kind of the same thing, I think. If you know Michael Branch, he is a Reno, Nevada professor. He writes, has written a series of books. So I would say Rants from the Hill was a... Really, his life, but it's kind of a humorist, so it's a nonfiction and a fiction together. So I haven't done any... Well, the nonfiction would have to be the Nevada Magazine, because Talking Books, also we do Nevada, you know, publications by the city. So I'm a reviewer, not a reader. I will take and listen to that written and hold it against... Hear the audio against the written and note corrections so they can be made by the reader. So I think nonfiction would be probably Nevada Magazine. I think it was a September issue.
Great. Mr. Giomi?
Mary, thank you for applying. Are you aware that the library has a strategic plan? Were you aware of that?
No.
So they do. They worked with the community and University of Nevada Reno to develop a strategic plan. So as a member of the Board of Trustees, I'm wondering what your strategy will be to hold the staff and the board accountable to carrying out that strategic plan? How will you go about that?
Well, I'm not aware of what authority a trustee member has. I've never been one, but I would suspect if, in reviewing the information that's given and the task that was assigned and the accomplishments made, comparing those and seeing if there's anything that fell through the cracks or ideas that weren't addressed. I mean, in my mind, the most I can kind of compare this experience to is an HOA meeting. You know, everybody gets together and reviews what's supposed to happen, what happened, and what needs to happen. So not knowing the strategic plan, I'm not sure. I just know that the services are important and reaching everyone is important, all the citizens, Ray.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bonkowski?
Hi, Mary.
Hi.
For my question, I would like your personal thoughts on digital content versus hard copy materials? What you feel the pros and cons are? How you would prioritize funding between the two? And which is most important to you personally?
Working backwards, I do both paperback and I have an e-reader. E-reader's more convenient when you're lying in bed and don't want to have a light. These kids are getting used to using screens all the time. I took my granddaughter for glasses and the optometrist said we have a special screen that puts against blue light, damaged their eyes. Speaking with my son, who's 34, and he says, I think kids' eyes are going to be damaged by looking at screens all the time. I think there's something innately fun about holding a book in your hand. So I don't know if it's more costly. I would suspect it is, but I'd really advocate keeping paper books, letting people come, experience them, or have them sent out if possible. I don't know. Do we have a mobile library that goes out to the rural areas? We don't?
Not us. Not in town.
Not in town, okay. But the library system itself does somehow?
Some of the rural areas have a mobile.
Have their own, okay. Again, reaching everybody. So I can't tell you my favorite. I'm sorry, what was the first, very first one of your questions?
Your thoughts on the pros and cons of each.
Something innate about having a book in your hand and being able to flip back and look again. Did I really say that? Oh, I kind of was zoned out. Let me go back. In a paper book is enjoyable. Also, sometimes books have pictures. I mean, I buy a lot of plants and the native identification and things like that. They have pictures. As far as reference things, those are important to be able to have charts or any information before computers. And I would get a job when I was young. I'd go and look at the S&amp;P for the company I was going to work for, see what their stats were. You know, having that reference information is important. Digital is... Well, that's what I'm doing with Talking Books. It's got to be digital. It's got to get to the audio sense. We produce it, we correct it, we get it out the door so it's available, certainly more widespread. I think it depends on the receiver, the importance of each one. So I couldn't say one's more important than the other. I think they both deserve, you know, the thought about what you're going to do with it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, Mary, do you have any closing remarks for us?
No.
Okay. Again, then, thank you so very much, and you're welcome to stay and listen to the... I think we have one more interview and then we'll make a decision. You're not required to stay, but you're welcome to.
Should I turn this off?
Please. Thank you so very much. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Are you Richard?
Yes, I am.
Great. If you could push the button just once and it'll stay green around the ring there, and then state your name for the record.
We're not getting anywhere, are we? Is it on? Richard Argyle.
Good afternoon, Richard, and thank you so very much for applying for this position. It's so necessary for the public to volunteer, and so we really appreciate you taking your time and wanting to help us with this position. The process is, we'll each ask a question of you, and then he is the last interview, okay? And then we'll make a decision on the candidate that we'll select. So I will start with, why do you want the position and what knowledge, skills, and abilities do you bring to the table?
My wife and I moved to Carson City two and a half years ago, and I've been looking for an opportunity to volunteer in this city. We love Carson City, and this happened to be a position that I saw in the Nevada Appeal that speaks to my strengths. I... My wife started writing about 25, 27, 30 years ago. And as such, I started getting interested in the book business. And I subsequently got a job at Crown Books, and I worked there at three locations in Southern California. And when Crown Books went out of business, I went and worked for Walden Books, and subsequently ended up at Borders Books and Music at the Block in Orange. And subsequently, my wife has continued being a published author, and so I've been constantly interested in the whole process of how people find and discover and read and absorb books and how it affects people.
Thank you much. Mr. Barrett, do you have a question?
Thank you, Richard. I'd appreciate it if you would name one fiction and one nonfiction book that either you've read recently or that sticks out in your mind from all of your reading over time.
The most influential nonfiction book I read was by Jared Diamond. It was called Guns, Germs, and Steel. It dealt with how the evolution of society was dictated by the geography of the area and that South America and North America had very little opportunity to develop as much as Europe did because of the influences of domestication of animals and grains that came across from Asia could spread rapidly across Europe because it was a horizontal transfer into the same climate zone, as opposed to North America where there was a limitation on how far maize could go. And there was also a limitation on the amount of domestication of animals. That was my nonfiction book. Fiction book, the last book I've been reading was Bernard Cornwall's book, which my wife got from the library, which was Warrior King, which is a fictionalized version of King Arthur, not King Arthur, the warrior Arthur in British mythology, and dealt with sixth-century Britain and the fighting internally in Britain between the Saxons, the Brits, and the Irish.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Giomi?
Richard, thank you for applying. Are you aware that the library has a strategic plan? Were you aware of that?
No, I wasn't.
Okay. Well, I do. And so as a member of the Board of Trustees, I'd like to know how you'll go about the process of monitoring the progress of that strategic plan as it relates to the board's performance and to the staff's performance.
One of my last positions at Borders Books and Music, I was the Community Relations Coordinator. And my job was full-time, and my job was to find methods of getting people to come into the bookstore, which is the same process that the library has of getting people to come in the door and experience the library. I was required by my company to provide 30-plus events every month. And I did that for three years, and I have to tell you that I found it extraordinarily difficult. No matter how well the programs were, I thought I'd be brilliant at it, and frankly, it was a harder task than I imagined. And I discovered in that process that the biggest problem that libraries, publishers, and bookstores face is to get the 95% of the population that doesn't come in ever in that side of their doors to even venture inside the library, as they find it intimidating to them if they're not a natural reader or if they haven't read that much. And so I will support any plan that the librarians, the director of the library has, and I heard him speak the other day about this, that the library has to become a meeting place for people to go and explore and develop their intellect. And the biggest problem is to get people to come in the door in the first place. No matter how well-crafted the programs are, it's hard to reach the extra people. And my only conclusion I've come to in the years that I did this is that in reality, you have to ride the wave, the wave of public interest in a subject. You can't generate it. You have to just take advantage of it. An example that I had when I was working at Brentano's, Princess Diana died. And of course, we had no knowledge of this, and so there was no books on that subject. Within six months, we probably had 90 books out on that subject. Then you have something like J.K. Rowling came along, and that was enormously influential in bringing people into the bookstores. And the last thing I dealt with, which I had very little knowledge about, was Pokemon, which stunned me, but I ran a Pokemon League in Orange. And again, nothing to do specifically with reading or bringing children in, but I was impressed by how much knowledge they had internally of how the game was played. I had no... I've played chess. I've played poker. I've played bridge. I had no idea how these children understand the complexity of this. And that's why I came to the conclusion that you just have to reach out into society and say, what is driving society and how can the library take advantage of those trends in society to bring people in?
Great, thank you. Mr. Bonkowski?
Hi, Richard.
Thank you.
My question for you is, I would like your personal thoughts on digital content versus hard copy materials? The pros and cons, in your opinion? How you would prioritize funding between the two? And which is the most important to you personally?
My wife's experience of this is that my wife gets daily updates from Penguin, Putnam in New York, as to how her books are selling. And the... On the fiction side, two-thirds of her bookstore's are still physical books, and only one-third is digital. Now, this is fiction, so it's not an area that lends itself to digitalization except for the benefit of using it on readers. I find the book to be personally and very effective product in itself. It doesn't require batteries. It doesn't require to be plugged in. It doesn't require to be downloaded. It's there, and if you accidentally destroy it, you're not destroying your entire library of those things. On the digital side of things, I find the problem is that my big disappointment with the Internet is the fact that there's no editorial capability that distinguishes from the inaccurate, the untruthful, and the truth. And that anyone that engages in a search on the Internet is as likely to come across untruths as truths. I thought that the Internet would destroy the flat-earth society, but it has not. And the thing is, my wife has an editor in New York. When you used to write a letter to the Nevada Appeal or any newspaper, the letters that came in were edited. The problem with the Internet, be it music, film, or YouTube, or anything else like this, is that it is unedited. And unsophisticated people that get unedited material can easily draw the wrong conclusions. So I think it's very valuable to have, but I think that part of the process of a library is to encourage people to discern in themselves as to what is valuable in the information that they are getting. I think the problem with young people is that they can just take anything off the Internet and, to use the term, consider it gospel. Does that help?
So again, I want to thank you so very much for applying, and then...
Now, this is fiction, so it's not an area that lends itself to digitalization except for the benefit of using it on readers. I find the book to be personally and a very effective product in itself. It doesn't require batteries, it doesn't require to be plugged in, it doesn't require to be downloaded. It's there, and if you accidentally destroy it, you're not destroying your entire library of those things. On the digital side of things, I find the problem is that my big disappointment with the Internet is the fact that there's no editorial capability that distinguishes from the inaccurate, the untruthful, and the truth. And that anybody that engages in a search on the Internet is as likely to come across untruths as truths. I thought that the Internet would destroy the flat Earth society, but it has not. And the thing is, my wife has an editor in New York. When you used to write a letter to the Nevada Appeal or any newspaper, the letters that came in were edited. The problem with the Internet, be it music, film, or YouTube, or anything else like this, is that it is unedited. And unsophisticated people that get unedited material can easily draw the wrong conclusions. So I think it's very valuable to have. But I think that part of the process of a library is to encourage people to discern in themselves as to what is valuable in the information that they are getting. I think the problem with young people is that they can just take anything off the Internet and, to use the term, consider it gospel. Does that help?
So again, I want to thank you so very much for applying. And then, do you have any final comments you'd like to share?
Only that I think that Carson City is at a very interesting decade ahead of it. I see enormous growth for Carson City and this area. And I think that the library has to grow and develop with the fact this is the state capital and an important part of Nevada. And I look forward to being able to contribute to that.
Thank you so very much, again.
You're welcome.
Did you just want to double-check that none of the other three candidates were out there? You may stay. Thanks. I'm just, we're good? Okay, then we'll bring it back up here for discussion. Wow, it's some excellent candidates today. Does anyone want to go first with their?
I'll go first.
Okay, Brad?
First, I'd like to say, we don't have any bad choices. Like, we can pick any one of the five and we're going to have a good choice. Charlie and Beth get brownie points because they were aware of and have reviewed the master plan, strategic plan for the library. Richard is especially intriguing to me. And at the end of the day, you know, I'm all for putting all five names in a hat and drawing one. Like, it's that close. It's that close. So per my scoring system, I have Charlie number one. But frankly, we can't go wrong here. So at the, you know, at the pleasure of the board, I'm ready to vote for any one of the five of you.
I'll go. I'm, like Brad, I am continually impressed at our citizens who come out to fill these roles and the quality of people we have in our community. Very much like Brad, I scored people very close. But I had Beth as the highest on my list. I thought she was particularly engaging and enthusiastic. And I like the fact that she is a user of our library from the time she was a kid to the time she had kids. I really like that aspect. So my vote would be for Beth.
Well, I hate to sound like the third, no, the third one to say, wow, what a crop, but, you know, you guys are all great. And I would also love to put you all on, or maybe with Brad's idea of pulling a name out of a hat. But my scoring system put Richard and Beth at the top. Unfortunately, they tied. So I'll just go with whomever we can get three or four people to go with. But those would be the two that I'm favoring. So we've got two for Beth. And Richard, I'm really, did Richard leave? Ah, Richard, I'm really intrigued by your accent. Where'd you bring that from?
Nothing in England.
Ah, I thought maybe it was England, okay.
Wow, I.
Looks like she's in control.
Yeah, I'm like, uh-oh, uh-oh, uh-oh. I think what was unique that I want to state is I thought each of you would fill a different skill set that is necessary for the library. And that's why, for me, the decision is so hard is because you each brought, you each bring a different element to the table. And so more for me, the question becomes, which one is filling the role that we need at this moment? And that's a difficult, if that makes sense, what I'm trying to say is what skill do I need the most on the library board at this moment in time? Because just like everyone has said, each and every one of you can fill a role on the library. And then I can't help myself of thinking of other positions that we have in the city and other roles. And I thought, woo, I'd like a couple of them for a couple other boards while I'm at it. So I'm really torn between Richard because I think he brings a skill set that does not currently exist on the board. And so if I say it, that's why I kind of lean towards Richard. And I really enjoyed thinking that Beth would bring something. But I think the last person that we selected for the board kind of fits that same skill set that you would bring. And so I'm looking for well-roundedness on the board, so I tend to lean towards Richard. But I could, so I like Richard and Beth. And I liked Charles and I liked Mary. No, anyway.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Haha, we'll put you in the hot seat, John.
I'll do it, I'll make a motion. I move to appoint Beth Lucas to fill a partial term expiring June of 2020.
I have a motion in a second to appoint Beth Lucas to fill a partial term expiring in June 2020. Any discussion? None?
Yes. Again, I just want to reiterate, we don't have a bad choice here. And just so you all know, I've never recommended putting everybody's name in a hat and pulling one out before. In seven years, that's the first time that actually you all interviewed so well that that would be my preferred method of choosing because there just isn't enough of a differential between any of you to, you know. Nobody stood out, everybody did a great job. So if you don't get chosen today, come back.
Commentary on that, Brad's both serious and humorous on that. He really means it. But at the same time, it is the first time he's done that.
Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Beth, welcome to the library board. Thank you, and again, thank each and every one of you for applying. And we know we're going to see you again. Okay. Okay. So we will move on to a final public comment. Is there any final public comment? You're kind of the only person in the room, Denny, so thank you for a good day. If there's no objection, then we will adjourn. Right? We're good, we're adjourned. Thank you all for a good day.